Today is Wednesday, September 13th, 2023. This is a full board meeting for the School District of Waukesha Board of Education. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Ms. Ettinger, can you please take the roll call?
Mark Borowski.
Here.
Betty Koenig.
Here.
Carrie Kozlowski.
Here.
Markell Moore.
Here.
Diane Voight.
Here.
Patrick McCaffrey.
Here.
Anthony Zenobia.
Here.
David Wad.
Here.
Kelly Piasik.
Here. And Sue, can you verify that the meeting has been properly posted?
Yes, it has.
Thank you so much. We do not have bright lights or recognitions tonight, but I do just want to welcome everybody back to the school year. We kicked off last week with teaching and learning, and we have quite a full agenda tonight. So we will move right into our citizen speakers this evening. Just as a matter of housekeeping, I want to make a reminder that once the meeting begins, we don't accept any additional speakers. We didn't have that problem tonight, but it's kind of come up in the past. So just as a reminder to everyone that we need to have everybody registered before the meeting starts. With that, we have two speakers tonight who will be notified at three minutes to begin to wrap up their comments. We'll have up to five minutes to complete their comments. We expect all speakers to honor our time limit, refrain from using any inappropriate language, and be respectful in their comments. Speakers who do not meet these expectations may be prohibited from speaking at future board or committee meetings. Speakers are here to address the board, not the audience. The board does not endorse any comments made by members of the community here tonight. We like to remind our community members of the impact of their words on others and that our students are watching. We commit to communicating you in respectful and productive ways and ask that you do the same. We also expect that the audience will be respectful of the speaker and of the board and refrain from responding with verbal comments, cheering, applause, or other behavior that will detract from the meeting. Please note that no obstructions can be created between the board and the audience. Visual aids cannot be used, and the area behind the speaker and podium should be clear during public comment. Also, in order to respect our speakers and meeting participants, please silence your cell phones. Our first speaker tonight is Mark Pass, followed by Tariq Akmut.
Good evening, school board members. Thank you for giving me the opportunity to come and speak as a parent and a citizen of Waukesha for over four decades. So we're proud of our school district. We're big public school supporters. We're grateful for the encouragement, guidance set of law on our kids to grow up and be productive members of society. So thank you. Thank you for the work that's been done in the past, and thank you for the work that you're going to be doing moving forward. The opportunity I want to speak with everybody tonight is something that's very near and dear to my heart. Each of us, as parents, as community, as instructors, as school board members, have an awesome responsibility, helping support the education of our children in every, I'm not a public speaker, in every evolving complex world. What's the best way to help district staff educate our most precious resources? I would suggest it would be by supporting and allowing our talented, dedicated teachers to instruct our children in ways that will help them develop the cognitive and emotional skills and sensitivity needed to understand their place in society. What would be one of the most effective ways of accomplishing this? I believe it would be to view our community and larger world with inclusivity, that everyone belongs, that every person is needed. We're all members to be together. We grow together. We learn from one another. We respect one another. In reality, though, each of us are captive to the human condition. Our shortcomings are that we are in essence confined by our own prejudices, unable to feel safe outside of what we believe and are accustomed to. To date, how has this behavior helped humanity? It seems that every generation experiences the worst examples of human behavior. And I would suggest, with no disrespect intended, and I mean with no disrespect intended, if the school district continues moving forward in the children, or the direction it's embarked on, that we'll continue on that path. We're well-practiced that from generation to generation. We do the same thing. We haven't learned the lessons from generation. Unfortunately, we have the opportunity here now, not to make a huge change, but to think, look at things a little bit different and act accordingly. Why are all of us so insecure in our identities that we forcefully deny others just as deserving as ourselves the right to free expression? Does this exclusion help our students feel included and part of their school society? There once was a researcher, Maslow, who identified one of the greatest human needs as to feel part of something and attend ideas of human need. The most important is to feel part of something, to be included and part of a whole. What do we believe our district actions will be to the developing psyche of our students? How are we preparing them for the future in a complex world? Last time I checked, our world continues to face extreme challenges, and I believe we need everyone to pull together to help solve our world's challenges. A beloved school district member, mentor, and talented teacher, Joe Vitale, used to say, "There's no growth in the comfort zone." Life isn't easy. I don't believe life is, and I don't believe for one minute that it was meant to be. We at every age can grow, learn new things, rekindle skills if we adults only try, just not the kids. In the future, it will be interesting to see what future generations may think of our actions. I'd like to close by reading a collection of values that maybe we all need to rededicate ourselves to, not only talk to talk, but even more importantly, walk the walk. It's really the school district conclusion statement and not discrimination statement. The school district of Waukesha talks about their employees. I like to think of this towards students as well. It does not discriminate in its admissions programs, activities, services, or employment on a basis of sex, age, race, color, national origin, ancestry, pre-pregnancy, material parental status, sexual orientation, physical, mental, emotional, or learning disability, or any other reason prohibited by state or federal regulations. So I just want us to think about our actions, how they affect everyone in our community. And I'd like to thank everybody for your continued work, not easy work, hard work, but the community appreciates it. We're looking for your help. All students are looking for your help to feel part of something. Don't exclude others. Don't exclude those that may be slightly different, that feel differently, that act differently.
Thirty seconds.
Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you. Mr. Akmut.
Good afternoon, members of the School District of Waukesha Board or Board of Education. I'm Tariq Akmut. Couple of things I want to talk about, the budget in a sense, because like many school districts, you're having problems with teacher retention. So I don't know what you have built into the budget to enable teacher retention. And I recently read a story about some survey that had been done about why so many teachers are leaving the profession. And they're leaving the profession because they don't feel respected. You know, there's a time when I went to, you know, elementary, middle, and high school, and even in college, you know, teachers were treated with respect. You know, they spend a lot of time with our kids, and despite what some people say, they are not indoctrinating our children, they're trying to do the best for our children. And they are, you always hear examples of how a teacher was a great mentor to a student and set them up for success during life. And it didn't matter if the student was white, black, brown, gay, but they've set them on the path to what they are now. So that, I think, is along the budget. And I know that crafting a budget always is tough, because sometimes you have to make some hard choices. But the choices should be made towards enabling the education of our children. And you know, you know that I have, for a number of meetings, talked about diversity. You know, part of that is inclusivity, too. We have to be willing to listen to different viewpoints. We can't be just rigid at this end and at that end, because nothing gets done. A person's marriage is a good example of it. If you both hold to your positions, you know, you won't be together anymore. And we all grow from interacting with other people. If I look back 40-plus years to when I was around age 20 in college, and some of the things I thought of there, you know, I don't think of those things anymore, okay? Because we all learn from the people around us. And we should allow the same thing in schools where students can learn from each other. You know, LGBTQ student or a black student shouldn't be bullied, just as any other student shouldn't be bullied. But sometimes policies are adopted that encourage bullying. And we all know, and I know that parents' rights haven't been diminished, you know? But there are some students who come from difficult backgrounds, and they may say something to a teacher or a guidance counselor in confidence. But if that were related to that student's parents, that student would be put at risk. And we have to consider that, too. You know, again, talking about this, respecting different opinions, sometimes it has gotten so extreme that just about a month ago in California, a female store owner was killed by a person who disagreed with her displaying the pride flag in her shop. Now, this woman was a straight woman, but she was supporting the LGBTQ plus community. Why have we come to that? Why are we sliding backwards? You know, some areas of America, we are as rigid as the Taliban and Al Qaeda are in the Middle East.
Thirty seconds.
So we have to keep that in mind. And again, I think it's great that the school year has started again. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. We will move along to our minutes approval. We have two sets of minutes for your review this evening, both from August 9th, minutes from the regular board meeting, and also from the executive session. We're looking for a motion to approve those.
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Zenobia, seconded by Mr. McCaffrey. Thank you. Any discussions or questions? All right, Sue, would you take the roll call, please?
Betty Koenig.
Aye.
Mark Borowski.
Aye.
Patrick McCaffrey.
Aye.
David Wad.
Aye.
Anthony Zenobia.
Aye.
Markell Moore.
Abstain.
Carrie Kozlowski.
Aye.
Diane Voight.
Aye.
Kelly Piasik.
Aye. Passes eight zero one. Thank you. All right, moving on to our communications and WEF report. We'll start with the WEF report tonight, Mr. Borowski.
All right, thank you, Mrs. President. So the WEF Board of Directors last met last Thursday, September 7th, and I had a report, as you might not be surprised about, the golf outing was just a tremendous success. And on behalf of WEF, I'd just like to thank everyone who attended or made donations or volunteered. WEF really does appreciate you and everything you do for their organization and ultimately the kids of Waukesha. The event netted over $26,000, which included revenue from the sponsored spots as well. Special thanks to the district's IT, who loaned us some iPads to use for this event. So we appreciate that. And we had great feedback and really looking forward to the event next year on August 1st. We're seeking, I guess next item is that we are seeking new board and committee members. So the committee members are able to start right away and get involved, and new board members are officially added to our annual meeting in December. We do have eight voting board members currently, and we have capacity for 11. So we're looking for three. We also have three non-voting members who are on our board, which includes the teacher liaison, the school board liaison, which is myself, and then the superintendent, of course. So again, while these members don't vote, they do provide us with invaluable input and help us keep a pulse on activities going on in the district. The Evening for Education is scheduled for April 11th of next year. We're moving it back a month and a half or so, maybe two months, from February that we did in this past year. And I realize notifications early, but we'd just like you to get it on the calendar and plan ahead, especially with the date moving a couple of months. The WEF Award winners are recognized at this event, and nominations are also now open for that. So regarding nominations, if you know of a business, organization, individual who should be recognized for their tremendous contribution to students and educators, consider that as a nomination. Or if you know of a company that has made your classroom better or a better place, that is also, could be a nomination. A nonprofit whose work has impacted our students, that could be a nomination. Or a current or former educator or supporter of education who's demonstrated a lifetime of dedication and commitment to education in our district, that also could be a nomination. So you can nominate them for an award for this year. And again, those three categories, Corporate Partner Award, Community Partner Award, and the Sally Jo McAlco Lifetime Excellence in Education Award. Just go to our website, waukeshaeducationfoundation.org, to nominate someone, and you can just click on the awards link. One other thing to mention is the annual Elegant Farmer Pie Sale is again taking place at the end of October, early November. Pickup is going to be before Thanksgiving, so be thinking ahead for that to help you out with planning in the stress of the holidays. We'll have more information for you at our next meeting. And finally, there is a copy at your spot for the annual report. So please take a look at that. We appreciate your support, and it also lays out all of the dates coming up for Waukesha Education Foundation. And, Ms. President, that concludes my report.
Great. Thank you, Mr. Borowski. Dr. Seabert, communications update.
I do not, Dr. Piasik. Thank you.
All right, thank you. All right, let's move on to our consent agenda, and we will start with public gifts. Mr. Clark.
Yeah, we have two gifts tonight. The School District of Waukesha made program received a donation of $3,500 from Generac to be used to update, repair, or purchase new equipment or project supplies for the technology education courses in the district. And then Hadfield Elementary received an anonymous donation of $500 to be used for the new Hadfield mascot uniform.
All right, thank you. All right, your agenda includes various categories for approval. If any board member wishes to have an item set aside for separate consideration, you'll have that opportunity in a moment. We do not have an expulsion panel action this evening. We do have two policies, Policy 5200 attendance and Policy 8550 competitive food sales for your consideration. If anyone would wish to have either of those policies set aside for separate consideration, please indicate so at this time, actually, any item that's contained in the consent agenda. Mrs. Voight.
I would like to have a chance to have more discussion for the idea of transparency, communication to the community about what those policies are about, rather than just the consent agenda without any explanation.
You mean this evening?
Right, just to talk about them.
Okay.
Rather than just saying, you know, they're approved just because they're there.
Okay. We did address both of those policies in the committees that are responsible for those policies.
Right.
So there was quite an extensive conversation about those at TNL and at FNF.
Right.
Okay.
So it's a matter of sharing with the rest of the community that doesn't take the time to watch TNL.
Okay, so are you asking that we pull the policies from the consent agenda to discuss?
To discuss them.
Okay, we'll do that. Thank you. All right, Mr. Borowski, will you present the consent agenda for approval, please? And remember that we're leaving out the two policies. We'll bring those back to the committee.
Okay.
That they fall under.
All right, thank you. So early this evening, the Human Resource and Conversation Committee approved 10 resignations, one retirement, and 26 new or modified contracts. The information was provided in your packet. An addendum was placed at your desk. I move that the consent agenda be approved as amended.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Further discussion? Okay, Sue, would you take the roll call, please?
Carrie Kozlowski.
Aye.
David Wad.
Aye.
Betty Koenig.
Aye.
Patrick McCaffrey.
Aye.
Diane Voight.
Aye.
Mark Borowski.
Aye.
Anthony Zenobia.
Aye.
Markell Moore.
Aye.
Kelly Piasik.
Aye. Passes nine zero. Okay, Dr. Seabert, superintendent to report.
All right, thank you, Dr. Piasik. Just a couple items for the board this evening. First, just a big thank you to our teachers, support staff, and administrators for a great start to the 23-24 school year. They've brought tremendous energy that has helped us have a great first seven days of school. And I also want to thank our kids and our families for their role in a great start, and a solid start for us as well. And just note that the district is always such a much better place when all the students and staff are all here. With that being said, I just also want to acknowledge that we have had some challenges, specifically with providing transportation for all of the kids and families who qualify. And we do understand that this has caused challenges for kids and families, and for that, we certainly do apologize. You know, on behalf of First Student and the School District, I want to say that we're committed to working together and collaborating in the best interest of all of our students and families, and that the district and First Student have been and will continue to work together to provide the level of service that has been historically offered in the past. The biggest piece of that puzzle is acquiring more drivers during a time of worker shortage across many industries, and specifically, in this instance, the transportation industry. We do meet daily, and we talk about solutions. We have seen somewhat of an increase in driver applicants at First Student, and we're actually seeing that as really optimistic, and we're grateful for that because it's indicative of how the Waukesha community comes together when they see a need. There are a number of drivers in multiple stages of the training and testing process, and as those drivers pass their tests, we can bring more routes online in the coming days and weeks. We do have a bussing dashboard on our district website. We monitor that progress daily, and we've been able to add three routes since the beginning of the school year, and we'll continue to send weekly emails to our families as we can bring more and more routes online. I also just want to say that the common ground among all of us is that we know that in order for kids to learn, they have to be in school. And I just want to recognize the families who haven't had that transportation, who have went out of their way to figure out how to partner with other families or to get their own students to school, and that's helped us have a tremendous start to the school year, and our parents have been wonderful in dealing with these challenges. So we're going to continue to work together with First Student, support them however we can. I really appreciate Mrs. Gunnerman and Mrs. Johnson, who's our transportation coordinator. The three of us are the ones talking every day with First Student, and I appreciate First Student's work to address this challenge as well. And along with adding the additional routes, as we do that, we'll be able to address the early and late routes that we're struggling with right now as well. So I just wanted to publicly say that. I know it's a challenge, and we really do appreciate the patience that people have had. We appreciate the understanding, and ultimately, we appreciate the many calls of support that we have had, too, as people have worked through this challenge. And just, we'll continue to get after it and solve it as best we can. So with that, Dr. Piasik, that concludes my report.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, we'll be moving on to our committee report outs, and I just wanted to make one clarification. So we're going to, we're going to redirect Policy 5800 attendance to student services and Policy 8550 on competitive food sales to FNF. So we'll take those up when we get there. Our first committee to report out tonight is HR. So back to Mr. Borowski.
All right, thank you, Mrs. President. All right, we have one action item tonight, the approval of the recommended candidate for the position of Assistant Principal at West High School. The administration is recommending Christopher Polaway for the position of Assistant Principal at West High School. Mr. Polaway stood out from his competition as a top candidate. His experience coaching teachers will be an asset as he joins West's team and co-leads the staff through professional development. He's a genuine professional who will build rapport and trust with the students, teachers, and parents. He's collaborative, has a calm and friendly demeanor. He's part of the community, and his experience with Avid and his strong instructional knowledge will be an asset as West continues to strive for excellence. Mr. Polaway has been in the district since 2016 as an instructional coach. He also has experience as an eighth-grade math teacher. He received his Master's of Education in Curriculum and Instruction from Carroll University and his Bachelor's Degree in Elementary Education from Northern Illinois University. Salary and benefits are according to middle management policies. Mrs. President, I move to approve the recommendation of Christopher Polaway for the position of Assistant Principal at West High School.
Thank you, Mr. Borowski. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. McCaffrey. Any questions or discussion? All right, Sue, would you take the roll call, please?
Anthony Zenobia.
Aye.
Patrick McCaffrey.
Aye.
Carrie Kozlowski.
Aye.
Markell Moore.
Aye.
Mark Borowski.
Aye.
Diane Voight.
Aye.
Betty Koenig.
Aye.
David Wad.
Aye.
Kelly Piasik.
Aye. Passes nine zero.
All right, we did have one discussion item tonight as well. The item was on exit interview data. So earlier this evening, the HR committee discussed the main reasons for teachers leaving the district. And there was a one sheet placed at your, at your spot there today on the table. It's got a little pie chart and some other data and information. I just wanted to refer to that as I'm talking about the topic. So of about the 110 or 120 or so people that left the district, about 42 filled out the exit survey, so about a third, I'd say, maybe a little bit more. The top three reasons that were listed were retirement, where eight people said retirement, six people said career change, and four said other conflict within the district. Our turnover rate was approximately 11%, just over 11%. And this year, we also, for the first time, asked the secondary reason that teachers may have left the district, and that was an optional question. 36 respondents for that question. Six said better salary, four said retirement, and three said other conflict within the district. Teacher retention in general is a state and nationwide issue. As you may know, area districts saw turnover rates between 4 and 16% with the majority of the area districts falling somewhere between 7 and 11%. And again, we were just over 11%. So knowing this, we're always going to work to be competitive as it relates to recruiting and retaining employees. We had some hard-to-fill positions, as you know, and they were like special education teachers, assistants, that were still open in July. So the district hosted a successful job fair where we interviewed over 30 people and hired several of them. I think it was just over five, if my numbers are correct. We have put more focus on mentoring program. We have 175 trained mentors working with our new hires in the district. As you know, TNL has done a lot of work in this last year to provide curriculum. The Behavior Committee has also met and addressed student behavior. The reduction in meetings at the site level are other additional ways that we're working to help the teacher workload. Additionally, we welcomed over 120 new staff members in two days of training before the rest of the staff began, I know some of you were there, to make sure they had some foundational knowledge and camaraderie to begin the school year. We will be getting feedback for new hires mid-year and also from all employees, as we always strive to improve onboarding and training to best meet the needs of our employees. If there's any questions or discussion?
Mrs. Voight.
Just a couple things. We had an extensive discussion at SWSA yesterday morning about the Wisconsin Policy Forum review that they had done, and Superintendent Seabert had shared that with us earlier in one of our Friday packets. And I think it's interesting to realize that the average teacher turnover in the state of Wisconsin over the last 15 years has been 11.5%. You know, so we're really doing well in terms of the state average for that length of period of time. This year, the highest year reported in teacher turnover terms was 15.8% statewide. You know, so you compare to that, again, we're doing very, very well in the current market. It's the second high compared to the year that Act 10 was passed. And just, again, the comparatives, and they mentioned that, that discussion, that this is a national trend. This isn't just the state of Wisconsin, it's a national trend. So, you know, I think we should definitely commend Sharon for the amazing work she's done to be able to fill the positions that we have had and to be able, you know, do a really amazing job in this whole process. And I want to thank the committee, you know, for following up on the point that was raised at the last board meeting, to look at exit interviews and to be able to become more aware of the reason for people leaving, that we can address those. And I think that Sharon's done a really good job about making sure that mentors are in place for new people for two years, you know, for all new hires, but for the new people for two years.
Yes, in the district.
And those are some of the definitely proven ways, you know, towards retention. So I think that, yeah, I'm very, very pleased with those kinds of things that are happening.
Mr. Moore.
I would like to publicly thank Sharon as well. I mean, that's not an easy job, especially as a director of Human Resources, well, Chief of Human Resources now, but that's not an easy job to recruit, not only recruit but retain teachers, hi, sorry, I'm so used to, I'm sorry about that. That's not an easy job for her to recruit, not only recruit but retain high-quality talent. So I want to say thank you for you and your department and also the other staff members who may have helped in the search to recruit and retain high-quality talent. Thank you for bringing new teachers into our district. retain high-quality talent. Thank you for bringing new teachers into our district. I look forward to seeing the success that this school year has with them, as well as the mentorship program. For new teachers, it'll be two years, and for, sorry, new teachers to the profession will be two years, and new teachers to the district will be one. So, I'm really looking forward to seeing successful outcomes with every single one of our new teachers as we welcome them to the school year. And that could not have been done without Sharon Thede. So, thank you.
Any other comments, Mr. Borowski?
Yeah, I just wanted to make a couple of other comments, too, to give some perspective to turnover. You know, I talked with Ms. Thede, and, you know, we might like to see the number a little bit lower, maybe 8% or so. 5% is probably unrealistic for a district our size. You know, if we're at a little over 11%, but lower than, you know, as you pointed out, Ms. Voight, other districts. You know, some turnover, obviously, is healthy. You know, we need new blood in the district, so to speak. You know, the two-day orientation that they have that many of us went to, it's just, it's nice to see the energy and the excitement and the youth coming into the district. The other thing it provides is, you know, when someone leaves the district, someone within the district might get a promotion or move to that role, which then opens up another spot that someone within the district could get, which then opens up another spot. So, you know, movement within the district and promotional opportunities and things like that, that's one of the good things about turnover. So, again, it's putting it in perspective, realizing we're going to have some, you know, we work on the issues to try to minimize it, but, you know, it is healthy, and those are some of the ways I see that it's, you know, some positives.
Mrs. Voight.
I had a chance to look in more detail at the exit interview details that were shared a couple of months ago already, I think it was. And I think that it's important for us to take the time to look at some of the suggestions for improvement that did come up in that narrative. One of the things that they talked about at the meeting before this meeting was the idea of the workload, and just the varying kinds of situations for that. And, you know, I think it's definitely something that we have to continue to look at. And it does make a difference if it's elementary or, you know, middle school or high school, et cetera. There's a lot of factors, and to try to deep dive on that. I think I looked for trends as I was reading through the packet, and, you know, many of the suggestions had to do with listening to teachers. And, you know, I think the fact that we're looking at a survey this fall to get feedback from teachers is really, really important, to listen to them about what's, why they stayed, you know? And I think that that's important. I like the fact that, within the survey, there was an element of, you know, what made working in the district enjoyable for you. And there were a lot of really, really good answers in that process that I was very, very impressed to see. You know, and I think that it doesn't have to all be negative. You know, why did they, you know, because they retired, because they left, because of a change of work situation for a spouse or whatever, doesn't mean that they had bad experience while they were working for us. And I think that came through very, very clearly in the thing. A couple other trends were the idea that teachers should be treated with respect as professionals. You know, I think that that's, that being a statement for like 13 people is something worth noting. About 18 mentioned the idea of being aware of equity, diversity, and inclusion as being a very important topic for, you know, for many of the staff members that left because of the change of some of the policies that we've made. So, I think to look at those additional feedback comments would be something that we should do as well as part of the exit interview.
Thank you. Mr. Wad.
Yeah, I have a question, and then I have a couple of comments. Do we do a in-year engagement survey with our active teachers as well? Is that something we do routinely?
We did one two years ago. Last year, last spring, we did not issue one, and we'll do, because we revamped it, and so now we are sending one out in October.
Okay, good. I'm glad to hear that. I just, I was hoping that the only place we weren't getting this kind of information was when people were leaving. I was, I had hoped that we're also collecting information about our engagement while people are still here. I think a couple of things that are important to me from looking at these numbers. First, I was actually surprised to see that our turnover number wasn't higher from a percentage standpoint, and that it is so closely aligned with historical trends statewide, which would almost suggest that, since our numbers are higher now than they have been, that we have historically been a leader in retention. Now, perhaps I'm wrong, and I'm reaching a conclusion that's not based in fact. But, I do think it's important for people in the community to understand that while there is a narrative that we have this tremendous turnover, the facts and data simply don't bear it out. Is it higher than we've had in the past? Yes. Would we want, would we want our retention to be better? Probably. Although, to Mr. Borowski's point, some amount of turnover is good for a corporation, for a business entity, for a school district. So, and what is just as encouraging is, we seem to have a lot of success filling those positions where we see people exit. I won't name the district because I don't have the facts specifically in front of me, but I know of a district in north-central Wisconsin which routinely has 50 to 70 positions open at any one time. And I would argue that that district does a lot more in the areas that some of our people leaving have said we don't do enough in, or our policy changes in those areas have driven them away. I have no doubt that there are people who leave because they have an issue with the policy or some policies within the district. That's true of every organization I've ever been a part of. We all know people who have left an organization, an employer, because they disagreed with some part of the culture there or some policy that pertains to employees. And I don't think that what we saw in the exit data would suggest that we're any different, and that we should even be surprised by that. And I would also be willing to wager that if some of those policy changes weren't made, we would see people leaving because we're doing too much in a different area, or that they may find some of those policies unfair in a different direction. So, I think overall, this data has been very helpful to me to get a better understanding of where we're at as a district in terms of why certain employees are leaving. Obviously, I'm sure one-third isn't a great representation of what everyone felt. Typically, people fill out exit surveys when they're unhappy, whereas a lot of other people will simply say, I spent my time there. It was fine. I've got a new opportunity. I'm moving on, whatever that might be. And they don't feel particularly compelled to share their reasons for leaving. So, and I'm also pleased to see that the turnover rate is not as high as some of the narrative that we've heard from others in the community suggests, which isn't to say we shouldn't strive for better, but it's not the, I think, overwhelming issue that some have made it out to be. And I want to, I want to thank Sharon and her staff for doing such a great job of bringing new people in. And I'm looking forward to when we can start seeing more data from those who are already on the job and working to see how they're feeling about things, and not just getting the information as people leave the district.
Thank you. Any other comments, Mr. Borowski?
Yeah, just another one to respond to some of what Mr. Wad said. You know, if people leave the district because it's, they feel it's not a good fit, for whatever reason that might be, if they feel that way, then it's probably the case. And then they can, you know, they pursue another district where it is a better fit. So, that's a win for them despite the turnover. And then for us as a district, we, you know, recruit someone to take that role that hopefully is a good fit for the district. We might not know for sure, but to me, I see that as win-win, you know, to what he was saying. The other thing that I talked to Ms. Thede about when we were talking about this issue is, I think one of the reasons we would look even more closely at turnover is if we did not have enough candidates for these positions. Now, for instance, the one that we approved this evening, the Assistant Principal for West High School, there were 47 candidates for that position. Now, I'm not here to say that every open position we have, there's 47 candidates. Sometimes there's one or two. But, if the majority of the positions that we're looking for, you know, we've got a dearth of candidates, then, you know, then that's something that we need to pay more attention to. So, again, I'm not minimizing the issue, but I'm just trying to provide information for the community at large to kind of put it in perspective, that turnover, so.
Anyone else?
I just, just a couple thoughts or comments that I wanted to add to this conversation, because I want to echo, like, I think I appreciate data, right, like, we all do. But, looking at it, trying to understand it, trying to make sense of it, that I think as a board and as a district, we're very data-driven, and that's a positive thing. I've actually seen the open position numbers kind of shift and decrease over time, but I know that's not happening magically. So, we've all, you know, recognize, and I do too, Sharon and her team and their great work, knowing that in some cases, it really is tough to fill some of these, you know, hard-to-fill positions, especially some of our special ed-related positions that are, they're challenging roles. And I've seen what some of these individuals go through to support our students with greatest need, and I have a tremendous amount of respect for them, and can appreciate that, especially over the last few years. These have just been really challenging roles for anyone. You know, we have, and we have a couple board members, I won't put anybody on the spot, but we have board members at the table here who are talented, qualified educators who have made career changes. And, you know, we kind of, we understand that firsthand, that, you know, not everybody's going to stay the same path that they kind of set out to, and it's just a really unique time. The other thing I just wanted to comment on, because it was just really positive and motivating, is that I and a few other board members, Mrs. Voight, Mr. Borowski, Ms. Koenig, had the opportunity to attend the new teacher workshop and picnic. Dr. Seibert was flipping burgers, and it was just a really nice day, and it was just such a positive thing to see our administrators engaging with people who were choosing to be part of the school district of Waukesha, and that just felt really good. Lots of excited faces and just lots of energy in, we were out over at Les Paul, again, using the beautiful facilities that the community has helped us, you know, establish. So, it just, it just felt good to be part of SDW and to see those people who are choosing to join. So, again, not minimizing the problem. I think Mr. Wad made some really insightful comments, and Mrs. Voight as well. Like, we all think it could, we would love for it to be better, right? But there's a lot of positives happening as a result of some of that turnover. So, just appreciate how hard everybody has worked, especially the administration, to make all of this happen. And that's all I have to say. Anything else? Okay?
That concludes my report, Mrs. President.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Borowski. All right. I don't believe we have an update, but Mr. Zenobia, anything for policy and government relations?
No, we didn't meet in September, but I believe we will be meeting October, I think, the ninth, Monday, following Finance and Facilities.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Speaking of Finance and Facilities, Ms. Kozlowski.
Where is Policy 5200?
5200 is attendance. That's student services. Mm-hmm. Yep. So, if you wanted to take Policy 8550 as a starting action?
Correct.
We could do that.
The Finance and Facilities Committee meeting met on Monday, September 11. There is one action item that we reviewed, Policy 8550 for the competitive food sales. This was recommended to us by the principal of West High School that has a unique opportunity where changes in regulations would allow us now, at the secondary level, to expand serving food and beverages outside of the lunch periods. And the important part for them is it gives a lot of our students a great opportunity in fundraising to be able to serve and fundraise for their respective sports and/or clubs. And so, the policy effectively is aligning to these regulations that is tied to making sure that these students can serve these things outside of the designated lunch area. The committee did approve that, and I so move.
Second.
Thank you. Any further discussion, questions? Mrs. Voight.
I just wanted to draw attention to the fact that that is an amazing advocacy on the part of the principal to come forward and talk about the TRAC program that has been put in place there, giving students these opportunities. The food service policy has changed over, you know, since I was a teacher. And when I found out that they don't have the opportunity to do the fundraising kinds of things, you know, with healthy food options, you know, in the school district, that's something that kids are always hungry, you know? And be able to take advantage of that and be able to use it as a fundraising opportunity is amazing. And I was really pleased to see that this advocacy, to be able to make this, you know, exemption, or following the rules of the Wisconsin fundraiser exemption possible for West High School. And I hope other schools would consider doing the same.
Kelly, just?
One other thing I'd like to add that the principal added on Monday night was, it is a fundraiser for the groups, but also it really allows a lot of special ed. kids to have real working experience. Essentially, they're running like a mini café. So, it's fundraiser, but it also has a really good educational benefit to the kids out at West, and I think will be repeated more likely at the other high schools.
Thank you. All right. If no further comments, Mrs. Ettinger, would you take the roll call, please? Raquel Moore.
Aye.
Diane Voight.
Aye.
Betty Koenig.
Aye.
Anthony Zenobia.
Aye.
David Wad.
Aye.
Kerry Kozlowski.
Aye.
Mark Borowski.
Aye.
Patrick McCaffrey.
Aye.
Kelly Piasik. Aye. Passes nine zero. Ms. Kozlowski.
Great. There were four discussion items that the committee addressed. The first item is the 2023-2024 budget development, where the committee was presented with the preliminary budget and updates on the budget calendar, as well as additional discussion as we know, as Mr. Clark talked about earlier tonight, that the budget process is a very fluid process on the timing of when numbers arrive. Any questions? The second item was the capital improvement project. The committee reviewed potential opportunities and costs for capital improvements being considered for the 2023-2024 school year. Some of these items included safety upgrades, such as bleachers at South, auditorium pieces, and other areas within all of our high schools that would be beneficial for safety and advancement of the students. The third item was the monthly budget report. The revenues and expenditures continue to be within budgeted limits for both the general and the special education fund. The district is operating in accordance with our approved budget in all other funds as well. The last discussion item is the ESR update. We have claimed and received 96% of our ESR-2 funds. ESR-2 is fully expended. The final claim just needs to be entered. The next Finance and Facilities Committee meeting is Monday, October 9, 2023, at 5:30 PM in the boardroom. Madam President, this concludes my report.
Thank you. All right. We will switch over to the Teaching and Learning Committee, and Mrs. Koenig is going to present the committee report tonight. Mrs. Koenig.
Thank you, Madam President. The Teaching and Learning Committee met last week, Tuesday, September 5, 2023. No actions have been forwarded to the full board tonight, but there are five discussion items on the agenda this evening. First is the discussion on Board Policy 2340, field trips and other district-sponsored trips. Dr. Piasik, Dr. Seibert, and Ms. Gennerman brought this item forward for the committee to consider policy revisions regarding the approval process for overnight field trips. Two policies from different districts were provided to the committee as examples that delegate approval authority to the superintendent or other designee. After discussion about the current policy, timelines, and ideas of how the approval process could be made more efficient, the committee supported having the administration propose policy revisions for discussions at the October meeting.
Any questions or comments about that?
Okay. The second, third, and fourth discussion items are presented together tonight since they include high school science curricular resources for biology, chemistry, and physics. As high school science proceeds through the curriculum design cycle, biology and honors biology, chemistry and honors chemistry, and physics and honors physics are all seeking new curricular resources to support the implementation of a guaranteed and viable curriculum. All three courses are required for high school graduation, and currently there is, there is no standard district-supported resource for any course. Erica Yoss presented an overview of the process, who will be involved, and the textbooks to be piloted this fall, with follow-up discussion at the committee meeting in January. All three texts are currently available for board members who wish to review them. Third, the final discussion item is purchasing process for Common School Funds. The purpose of this report was to share more information about Common School Funds and the purchasing processes for these funds. School districts receive an annual distribution of earnings from the Common School Fund. These funds, commonly known as library aid, are the principal source of funding for the school libraries in Wisconsin. School districts receive an annual distribution of earnings from the Common School Fund based on the number of residents.
residents. For the 2022-23 school year, the school district of Waukesha received $784,904 to be used for restricted library media purchases, including library books, instructional materials for school libraries, and school library computer, computers. As stated, in our three-year library plan that was approved last month, the district library media team will prioritize these funds for items on the annual replacement plan for library technology and for Spanish texts at the middle school level. Further, the library media specialists will collaborate as primary and secondary teams prior to purchases to ensure consistency across the district. Ms. Generman will be working with school administrators to review the orders quarterly and to investigate the use of digital resources to support the efficiency of this work.
Mrs. Kozlowski.
Thank you. I do have a question or clarification that I wanted on the process. Based on the presentation, it seemed we were unclear about who was going to be the approver, and that that may rotate around. And for me, I think there is something, I like the quarterly review. I think there's structure there. But what I do know is that it should be a controlled approver and not multiple that rotates around, because we lose visibility into history, process, controls around what we're purchasing. And so, I just wanted to get clarification on that.
Yeah, that was a point of discussion during the meeting. We had talked, Dr. Seibert and I had talked about, with the idea of quarterly, you know, he or I sitting down together and doing that. We've since talked about including the teaching and learning directors, but having quarterly, this is the set team. Ultimately, what we've been working on behind the scenes is that I am becoming the approver with all the financial pieces. So, it would be myself with Dr. Seibert and/or additional teaching and learning directors.
Thank you. Anything else?
Madam President, that concludes the Teaching and Learning Committee report. Our next meeting will be held on Tuesday, October 3rd, 2023, at 7:00 PM, following the Student Services meeting in the boardroom here at the Blair Administration Building.
Thank you. Thank you, Mrs. Koenig. All right. Our next committee tonight is the Student Services Committee, and that report will be given by Mr. McCaffrey. And I think we can maybe begin with an introduction of Policy 5200.
We sure can.
Thank you.
The Student Services Committee met last Tuesday, September 5th, 2023. We have two action items on the agenda this evening. The first action item will be Policy 5200 Attendance. This action item was brought forward, give me one second, to bring our policy more in line with our current practices related to truancy and open enrollment, along truancy as well. I move board approval of Policy 5200 Attendance.
Second.
Thank you. Any comments? Okay. So, would you take the roll call, please?
David Wad?
Aye.
Markell Moore?
Aye.
Diane Voight?
Aye.
Mark Barowski?
Aye.
Betty Koenig?
Aye.
Anthony Zenobia?
Aye.
Patrick McCaffrey?
Aye.
Kerry Kozlowski?
Aye.
Kelly Piasik?
Aye. Passes nine zero.
Thank you. Our second action item is the approval of the implementation of the Five Stones of Fox Valley Innocence Sold and Accompanying Materials. Mark Lennar, Director of Student Services and representatives for the Five Stones of the Fox Valley area, presented information at the June 6th Student Services Committee meeting regarding human trafficking. Information was shared regarding the educational materials. Mr. Lennar shared more details and led discussion prior to the committee considering approval of the implementation of these educational materials on human trafficking. Mr. Lennar worked with the Teaching and Learning Team regarding when the instruction could take place during the school year. Seventh grade students across the district will experience their new learning this year. Beyond the 2023-2024 school year, this will continue as a learning opportunity for seventh, for students in seventh grade. On a vote of 4-0, the Student Services Committee approved the implementation of the Five Stones of Fox Valley presentation of Innocence Sold and Accompanying Materials, and I move board approval.
Second? Seconded by Ms. Voight. Thank you. All right. Sorry, Mr. Zenobia.
It's okay.
Any comments, questions, or discussion on this topic? Mrs. Voight?
When I attended the WASB convention back in January of 2020, I attended a session called "The Role of School Leaders in Preventing Sex Trafficking." And to read from that description, it's, when can, what can school leaders do to help stop the exploitation of our youth? Starting in middle schools, and students, and, starting in middle schools, schools and students can play an important role in preventing sex trafficking. Learn how investigators and crisis staff up in the Fox Valley, you know, had, had set, got their program in place. I immediately came back and went to DODI and said, "We need to look at this." And I was so pleased to see that three years later, it's actually being implemented. And, you know, they, they have a, a track record, you know, with, the SRO had done the presentation at, at that school board meeting. And, you know, I was just so impressed with what they were doing and, and the great things they were doing to help to stop that kind of initiative, you know, within our community. And, you know, it's like, I'm just so pleased that the committee has, has adopted this process.
Mr. Broowski?
Yeah, if I could just comment as well. I know they did a kind of demonstration back in the summer at South High School, and I was able to attend that, and it was in the evening. A couple of my takeaways were that, first of all, the, the group from the Five Stones is very passionate about what they do. They're very committed, and that just really comes across, which I think helps, especially for this kind of awful topic. And, you know, the training itself is very interactive with students, and it also shows the same story from different points of view. It shows it from the victim's view and what that person is thinking about and considering and struggling with. It shows it from the perpetrator's view, and then it just shows it from like a friend of the victim who could have maybe intervened and done something. So, I think that's one of the reasons it makes it so effective, is you've got students thinking about the same issue from three different perspectives and seeing how it can look and really feel differently. So, yeah, I'm, I'm anxious to see what, what the program does for our district.
Any other comments? Mrs. Koenig?
I just wanted to mention, too, that the, the topic, you know, is so serious, but it couldn't be more timely, you know, considering what's going on in the world today. I appreciated that the presenters are all either former educators or social workers, and they've all gone through background screening processes. So, these are just not strangers that, you know, coming in that we really don't know anything about. They've all been, you know, vetted. And as you said, Mr. Broowski, they're very passionate about this topic. Another very positive note about this program is that it's provided to, the district materials are all paid for. There's no cost to us. So, I think that's even just a double bonus that we're getting something this wonderful, you know, presented by people that are passionate, you know, well-vetted, you know, people. And it's not that we have to worry about how it's going to be funded. So, I think this is just a win-win-win-win for me.
I would just add one additional comment, and that's just with respect to the content itself. As we always strive to be age-appropriate, transparent, there's no secret to what this material is. It can be reviewed. I would encourage that, so parents understand and can have those conversations with their kids when they get home. It does, it does kind of fit that, that grade-level appropriateness. And I appreciated the committee's discussion about ensuring that the proper supports were there if, for any reason, it, it triggered escalated a situation that might require some specific services to those students. So, I think it's very, very thoughtful in the interest of keeping our children safe. And then I think, again, in the spirit of just transparency and respect for parents, you know, asking those questions is appropriate, and certainly is not a mandatory experience. So, keeping that in mind, I think it just really fits with our philosophy of how to go about these sorts of things. So, I'm fully in support of that. Any other comments?
Okay. Mrs. Ettinger?
Diane Voight?
Aye.
Betty Koenig?
Aye.
Mark Barowski?
Aye.
Kerry Kozlowski?
Aye.
Patrick McCaffrey?
Aye.
David Wad?
Aye.
Markell Moore?
Aye.
Anthony Zenobia?
Aye.
Kelly Piasik?
Aye. Passes nine zero.
Thank you. The next Student Services Committee meeting is on Tuesday, October 3rd, 2023, at 6:00 PM. That concludes my report.
Thank you, Mr. McCaffrey. All right. We are to our other business section of the agenda. Are there any recommendations for future board or committee action or discussion items? Seeing none, we do have a need to adjourn to executive session this evening, and we need items, all three items, items B, C, and D. Is there someone who would like to give it a go? Mr. Wad?
I move re-adjourn to executive session pursuant to Wisconsin Statutes 19.85 Sub-1 Sub-E for deliberating or negotiating the purchase of public properties, the investing of public funds, or conducting other specified public business whenever competitive or bargaining reasons require a closed session, in this case, pupil transportation contract. Also pursuant to Wisconsin Statutes 19.85 Sub-1 Sub-G, conferring with legal counsel for the governmental body who is rendering oral or written advice concerning strategy to be adopted by the body with respect to litigation in which it is, or is likely to become involved. This pertains to a former employee matter. And finally, for Wisconsin Statute 19.85 Sub-1 Sub-C, to consider employment, promotion, compensation, or performance evaluation data of any public employee over which the government body has jurisdiction or exercises responsibility, specifically superintendent evaluation and compensation for superintendent and executive administrators.
Thank you, Mr. Wad. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Mr. Broowski. We, we will likely reconvene on at least one topic this evening, so we'll reserve that option. And with that, I would just like to remind everyone, our next meeting is Wednesday, October 11th, at 7:00 PM here in the boardroom. And with that, we are adjourned.
Madam President, point of order.
I apologize. Yeah, thank you. So eager. Mrs. Ettinger, thank you.
Mark Barowski?
Aye.
Anthony Zenobia?
Aye.
Markell Moore?
Aye.
David Wad?
Aye.
Kerry Kozlowski?
Aye.
Patrick McCaffrey?
Aye.
Diane Voight?
Aye.
Betty Koenig?
Aye.
Kelly Piasik?
Aye. Passes nine zero. And now, we are officially adjourned. Thank you.